Six p.m. in council chambers. We don't have any remote electronic attendance. Is there any public comment this evening? Seeing none, any questions on the agenda? Seeing none, you'll note a board appointment of Eva Trimble to the Ministry Commission and S.S.A. number six to fill the unexpired term of Anna Maria Roca, expiring September 30th of 2024. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we move toward informational. I guess there is sending your way.
The December 2022 status and information report is in your packet. Let me know if you have any questions about that. Look, in January, the year-end, 2022 year-end report will be provided. And I think January is the date the staff has provided that information.
Thank you. I wanted to say about that report, I appreciated getting the details on staffing from Fire. Chief, I'm not sure if we had seen some of those numbers so far, so that was really helpful. Thank you for that. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. White?
Yeah, just a clarification. We've talked in a number of times regarding single-family licensing for rentals versus registration for inspections. And they seem to have been conflated back and forth and resulted within some of these reports as just an extension of the registration for inspections. But I think we've talked many times about a licensing regime. And so I just want to get clarification. What is staff working towards? And do we have a timeframe for that?
I think that's a you question, Mr. Veeloke.
It is, but it's also unfortunately building. They're actually the ones that maintain our rental registration component.
Do you want to come to the microphone briefly?
Yeah, and I'll actually direct you to Director Doy over here.
But yeah, so rental registration is actually handled through the building department and with them, so I'll actually turn the floor over to Mr. Doy.
But I guess that's part of my concern is that I thought that our direction was we were moving towards a licensing regime, not just a registration. Right?
Thank you for pointing that out. We'll take this report and then we can double-check with Bob about any direction he's given or where, if that's gotten, as you said, I think you used the word conflated.
Conflated, yeah, because I've asked Bob about it and then never heard anything back about it. And then we continue to get reports that just talk about this registration, which is, I think, is a very different thing than what we've been talking about. Because I think that this also lines up with some of the concerns with ADUs, is having a licensing regime in which if people violate it, they can lose their license, as opposed to what seems to be, I think that was the direction we gave, and then we just keep getting reports about this registration, which is a totally different animal, where if you don't register, then you just have to pay a late fee for registration.
Thank you for pointing that out. We'll definitely follow up on where we're at with that. What can you tell us, Mr. Doy?
Sure, okay. So we are working on basically all aspects of the rental housing program. Right now, we have the Fire Department doing multifamily. There is no current program for single-family. And we are also doing, the Police Department is doing the crime-free housing. We are working to tie all of these together so that they will complement each other. And we are looking at putting together a database that can be used by multiple departments, not just Police, Fire, and Buildings, but also by Finance and others as well. So we're putting all that together. We are looking at updating the ordinances to reflect that as well. And we are looking at the license versus registration question along with that. So we've done a study of a number of other municipalities and their staffing requirements for doing these types of inspections. And we've got numbers put together for staff, for vehicles, for computers, and all of that. So, yes.
Yes, Mr. White.
Sorry.
And again, I think we're conflating the two things again. I mean, a licensing thing versus an inspection regime are two different things. A licensing is, a right to do it within our community is provided to you by getting a license, which, if you violate X, Y, and Z with due process, you lose that right. That's a different animal than an inspection regime, in which you're talking about, you gotta hire two or three inspectors, and you gotta have staff, and cars, and all those different things. I'm not saying that that may not be where we eventually get to, but I think the direction that we had given was to do licensing for single-family and multifamily houses.
I see a couple more hands, and maybe then I'll come back to you. Yes, Mr. White?
So my recollection was to look toward that and how it would tie into, I mean, actually what Director Doy was just describing. Because we want to look at licensing. I think that's where I'd like to see us get to as well. But that has to go hand-in-hand with those inspections, because without the inspection component of it, a licensing regime would not be enforceable. And I think that we have given direction to look at how that would all need to balance. That is my recollection, the guidance given.
So regardless of what our recollections are, we have to move forward with double-checking where we're at with what was stated in our adopted strategic goals or objectives and what you guys have been working on. So we definitely have to come back to this item. What else did you have?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. There are a number of communities where the inspection, I think to say that without inspection, that's not enforceable, that's not true at all. You can have a licensing regime in which if there are other violations that happen, they lose their license. You could have situations in which in extreme cases, nuisances, and in those sorts of things that happened with Brad Homan on a regular basis, that if they happen a number of times, that then affects your license. It doesn't predicate the requirement that you have an inspector go into each house and do full inspections and those sorts of things. Like I said, I'm not against that, but I agree with you. The idea is that if we have to get all of these things in place, it's going to be years before we get this. And this has been part of the problem. We've been trying to get this put together, but if you do the licensing thing, we could do that fairly quickly with the database and those sorts of things and not have to hire a bunch of staff. And then we could layer on top of it, when we're ready, the inspections and those sorts of things. Because quite honestly, the inspections we do right now for multifamily is a drive-by by the Fire Department if it's an A, you know? And I have a property that I think got classified as a B or an A, and it certainly should not be from the outside. It's fine on the inside, but it... And so I think that those are two different things, but I think we need to get this licensing in place, because I think that it is also an extremely important thing with the ADUs, so that if somebody violates that, they can lose their licensing. And so I don't want us to communicate to the public that we've got to have all seven components of this thing for it to launch. I mean, we could do licensing sooner if we give, and I thought that was the direction we had given, but if that's not my recollection, then maybe I'll ask somebody to, because we can't vote to direct staff apparently in council or anymore, to put it onto the agenda next week to give clear direction that we want to get this licensing done first.
All right, there will be follow-up, is basically where we're at, because we're not at a place to debate the pros and cons of the programs themselves at the moment. Thank you for the information you've given. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
Basically, we are going to look at all aspects. It is pretty much an all-encompassing program, and it's not meant for council to say, you have to do this or nothing. It's meant for council to say, we like this portion, we like this portion, we may not like this portion, but we are really working towards that to cover all aspects of it.
Thank you. We'll look forward to the clarity.
Do we have a timeframe?
I don't...
I would say that February would be, that I would hope to have it before February, but February would probably be the latest to be able to have something to present.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, Mike's been doing a lot of the heavy lifting on this, and if you're on target for February, I think that seems reasonable. Another aspect of it is the, yesterday, we evaluated some software to incorporate in this process too, so that's been another angle to this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anything further from the council? Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
I saw, I know I saw it in there somewhere, progress report on the TIF for the Illinois 92 corridor. Is there any progress on that that we can discuss? Brian?
So there's not much we can discuss at this point. We are working with our consultants, PGAV, to begin to put that process together, and we will probably have an ordinance before the council here in January to actually allow for us to incur costs before the TIF is actually in place. And we are looking for probably spring to have a redevelopment plan prepared and have a TIF before this body for consideration.
Okay, thank you.
And that was with a project?
Yes, it would be a project-based TIF, yes.
Thank you. Anyone else in the informational? Yes, Mr. White?
Yeah, and this comes down because next week will be the one-year anniversary where we voted to direct staff to come back within, I think, two months on the John Deere corridor parking analysis. And it says that staff anticipates some review of potential amendments presented to Plan Commission in early 2023. So is that, like, we think in January or February? I just, because this has been a year, I...
I understand, I mean, it's been six months since I've been able to come aboard. And what I will say is that in the six months, we have been tasked to do many, many things in CED. It's something we're looking at, but with the other items that kind of keep taking priority, I will admit it has slipped. We are looking probably sometime in early '23 to actually be able to hopefully come before the Plan Commission with some amendments to our parking standards.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll call our regular meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Williams?
Welcome to the presentation. Lord, I ask that you bring us together to do what's best for our citizens, that we research and understand the votes that we take, and we ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Roll call, please. Elder Person Williams?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, I request...
Can I request that 3053 be taken off the consent?
Sure, thank you. I request approval of Committee of the Whole Council on Executive Session Minutes of November 29th, 2022, and appointments made during Committee of the Whole on December 6th, 2022. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill 3052-2022, an ordinance dissolving the special tax allocation fund and terminating the designation of the City of Moline Tax Increment Redevelopment Project Area TIF Number One within the City of Moline, Rock Island County, Illinois. Council Bill 3054-2022, an ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 10 thereof, parking prohibited at any time by removing 26th Avenue North Side from 41st Street West 300 feet, removing 26th Avenue North Side from 34th Street East 1300 feet, adding 26th Avenue North Side from 34th Street to 31st Street, removing 26th Avenue South Side from 34th Street to 41st Street, adding 26th Avenue South Side from 34th Street to 38th Street, and adding 26th Avenue South Side from 41st Street West 290 feet. Resolutions. Council Bill 1203-2022, resolution setting the annual meetings calendar, or rather, scheduled for 2023, and authorizing city staff to do all things necessary to notify the media of the 2023 annual meetings scheduled. Council Bill 1204-2022, resolution authorizing the Illinois Municipal League to collect the 2% foreign fire tax insurance license fee for the Foreign Fire Insurance Tax Revenue Administrative Board, and authorizing the Illinois Municipal League to act as its sole agent for the collection of the rightfully imposed foreign fire tax insurance license fee to take necessary actions and carry on unnecessary communication with the foreign fire insurance companies owing fees on behalf of this board, and shall remain the designated agent until notified by the City Council by adopted resolution of the City Council rescinding this agreement and engagement. Council Bill 1205-2022, a resolution authorizing the Chief of Police to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Maysearch South Park Mall LLC and the Moline Police Department, setting forth the terms for access to Maysearch's video management system or video surveillance system. Council Bill 1206-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to a contract with Higher Construction Incorporated for Project Number 1385, 2022 Sewer Lining Program for the amount of $444,001.80. Council Bill 1207-2022, a resolution amending Budget Resolution Number 1232-2021 by authorizing various changes to line items of the fiscal year 2022 budget, and authorizing the Finance Director to do all things necessary to complete said changes. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Elder Person O'Brien, seconded by Macias. Roll call, please. Elder Person Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Non-consent agenda, second reading ordinances. Council Bill 3053-2022, an ordinance amending Chapter 15 Garbage and Trash of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 15-1100 Definitions, Section 15-2102 Curbside Recycling Carts, Section 15-2200 Fee for Residential Refuge Collection, and Section 15-2201 Preparation and Collection of Residential, by adding amendments to reflect the new fee structure as a result of the 2022 fee review effective January 1st, 2023.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Elder Person Waldron, seconded by O'Brien. Discussion, Mr. Went?
I had a couple of questions and then one other possible amendment. For the brush collection, in it, it took out the section of the permit stickers, but how is that going to be collected, then?
Can you come to the microphone?
Yeah, the fees for that, how is it going to be collected, then?
Okay, and I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Sure, it says with the yard waste, we made this change for basically an incremental amount, if they, the more they put out there, 40 feet for $40 for each additional one, rather than the one-time fee. But within it, one of the things we removed was said fee shall be collected by the purchase of a permit sticker from the city's Accounts and Finance Department. If we take that out, is that, how are we going to collect that money? Is it going to be paid upfront? Is it going to be billed to them in arrears?
I believe it's going to be paid upfront. I believe that's how we currently do it. I would actually have to talk to Finance to get an opinion.
So whenever they have a special garbage pickup, they pay that upon whenever they need a, you may get the first one free, and then anything after that, they have to pay the 40 bucks before the generators work.
Mr. Waldron?
I just want to say there hasn't been a sticker in, even going back to my time.
Right, and I understand that, but with these flat fees, that's, even if it was collected upfront, that makes sense. But if it's a fee that is determined by how much is actually out there, the person at home isn't going to know how many cubic yards and those sorts of things, how that's going to work. They're going to call up and be like, yeah, I got some brush in front of my house, come pick it up. I mean, this has got a variable rate depending on how much is out there. We don't seem like we're addressing that at all.
Will you go back and charge them, bill them, if they put out more than what they've paid for?
Yes, so here's really how we did it. The first thing we did is we described and why we changed it from two to two and a half cubic yards, because if you take a small pickup truck and you raise to the top of the bed, that's approximately two cubic yards. Also, and we put that in there too, it's also going to be in our literature that we're handing out. If you set two refrigerators, stairs under refrigerators, laying them down side by side, that's approximately two and a half cubic yards. So we plan on doing that. We also, in addition to that, as I'm having the guys make up, the staff make up some PVC pipe, so it's easy to take apart and put together, you'll have the two ends, that will be a 2.5 cubic yard frame, basically. So we'll take it out there, if there's a lot, you know, we're not going to do things if it's 2.75 or anything like that, but if it looks like it's double or more, something like that, we can set our frame against there, or you can knock on the door if the homeowner comes on, we can take pictures, and send it to them, so that the people actually pay for what, for what they would have really intended for them to pay for.
Thank you for that explanation.
But if they're paying in advance, I don't know how that works. Is that...
Well, but he said they would go back and bill for the extra.
Okay, so they'll just have to pay for the first yard, or is that what the plan is going to be? I just don't want, for a resident to call up, we tell them it's 30 bucks, and then we go out and we pick things up, and then they get a subsequent bill for 400 bucks.
Well, and part of the reason that we've done it this way is because, and we've got plenty of pictures to prove this, you have a resident with a front inch of 75 feet wide or 100 feet wide, and we go out there to pick up yard waste, we go out there to pick up special pickups for garbage, and the whole front yard is covered this high, and so that's the reason why we came up with what we thought would be a good system. We should have, we'll have the resident's phone number, we can call her and say, you have the option of either paying for this additional amount that we'll pick up, or you can take it and find another way of disposing of it.
Okay, I'm not opposed to this. I supported this process. I just, the way that it was kind of presented here, it wasn't clear if our intent is, if we show up and it's over the first yard, we're going to call the resident and say, hey, it's going to be an extra 120 bucks, are you okay with it? I mean, that...
It would, I would say...
I don't know if that's how we're going to do it, but...
I would say somewhere in your administrative procedures, make sure what you've told us is written down, so that, you know, it might not be in the ordinance language, but it's good for future reference.
Sure.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Went?
Another question. We took out the section about appliances, picking up appliances, so we'll no longer be doing that at all?
We haven't been doing that for years.
Is that because they won't, they'll no longer take it?
No, that's a service offered by Rickema.
Oh, okay.
They contract out county-wide.
Okay, because it says something in here, so long as the Rock Island County Waste Agency absorbs the expense. So before, we were doing it, and they were paying for it? And now they just do it themselves?
For many years, we did it ourselves, but it's been at least 15, 20 years since we picked up appliances.
Okay.
And Rickema's handled it since then, county-wide basis.
So residents of Moline can just call Rickema, they'll come out and pick them up?
Correct.
For 25 bucks, or do you know that?
No, it's just a service that's paid through their tipping fees.
Okay.
Mr. Macias, and then Mr. Williams?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. And usually, when you put metal outside, it's gone within a couple days. The private sector takes care of that, and most of our...
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
When we do neighborhood cleanups, and I know probably 10-plus years ago, they were taking out old bins and refrigerators and stuff like that as a one-time thing when a neighborhood does it, but we bringing it back to Public Works then, and then they would come...
Rickema would come and get it.
So we just act, so we collect it as part of a neighborhood watch.
Okay.
A neighborhood cleanup, but not individually, but we would do it if a neighborhood organized to do a one-day pickup, they'd have them all out, and we will still pick those up and have them come. Is that what you're thinking, or...
Yes.
So I would add on to these questions or concerns. The education piece you mentioned for the public, I think that's great. I think you should work with, personally, I think you should work with Tori Breck to put some of this kind of stuff together, to keep explaining how this is going to get done for the public.
And we kind of did it do's and don'ts. We made a spreadsheet of do's and don'ts. Do, put out regular bulky waste. Don't put out lead batteries, acid. And then we actually, for other places to take those, we actually put the phone number, the company and the phone number. So people for lead batteries, people for tires, or other places, is all in that informational sheet we made up.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Waldron?
A public education thing that would be extremely valuable. Keith, at your office, when they come in to make that one-time payment, to notify them at that time, listen, if this turns out to be a lot more than what you're kind of insinuating on what you're paying, we may be back in contact with you.
Yeah.
That would help dramatically.
That's my big concern about how this would work.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none, roll call, please. Elder Person Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Thank you very much. Resolutions. Council Bill 1208-2022, resolution establishing the American Rescue Plan, ARPA, Business Owner Occupation Stabilization Transformation Boost Forgivable Loan Program, to provide financial assistance to eligible City of Moline-based businesses to start up and/or accelerate existing small businesses. Thank you. Do we have a motion? We have a motion?
Motion to approve? Second.
A motion by Elder Person Timian, seconded by Elder Person Moyer. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Went?
Yeah, I know that we had talked about this last week, and we had given, we didn't vote on it, so we gave some kind of, to move forward with it. But I guess from our conversations and the discussion, when they said, well, we're going to be hiring an outside consultant to help with this process and those sorts of things, I guess I was under the impression that that meant we were saying, hey, yeah, this is a kind of good idea, go, come back, talk with the consultant, come back with us, get their expert opinion, because we don't do these things on a regular basis. And they would come back to us at that point with what this program looks like, is $80,000, the right amount is 35, or are these numbers doable? Ask the experts what needs to be tweaked, and then we are going to finalize it and go forward with it. But when I reached out, I think sent an email to KJ, and I think the mayor responded back that, no, the vote today is that we're doing it, and that consultant is just going to basically implement it. So like, this is the program, 100%, this is what we're voting on, and when the consultant comes in, it's not going to be to help us improve it or anything, it's just going to be to implement it. And I guess from my standpoint, I was in the consensus to move forward with how it was presented, to go forward with that consultant, but that it was going to come back here after we talked with the consultant, because personally, I think there needs to be some tweaks here. I saw that there was a couple of things, based on what we said, that was changed within the slideshow, but I think overall, I would like to see this move forward, sure, but that it come back after we hire this consultant and make some determinations before we finalize it and say, just go. Because otherwise, what's going to happen if we vote on this here, this is just going to happen, and we're not going to have any say or communication in with this, and it'll just kind of happen. And so I wanted to get other people's input on what their recollections or thoughts was on last week's consensus as well.
Mr. Schmidt?
That is not my understanding of the consultant at all. My understanding of the consultant was strictly limited to helping develop the resources
And I I will add that I, when I said that we couldn't just give you a thumbs up, that it had to come back as a resolution, you said, uh, Ms. W- uh, Whitley, that, oh, so I can bring it back next week. That was said last week in our meeting. You, I'm seeing some nodding heads.
Yeah.
So if if CED would like to clarify at all, that would be fine.
Alderman Went, sorry, I did not have an opportunity to respond to your email. Seriously, I've been in a lot of meetings today, so, thank you, Mayor, for responding. Um, yes, so the consultant will come on board and help us with the education component of it, with the mentorship of it, um, and the reporting aspect of it. Staff will start with the pre-marketing of it, um, and, uh, set like set the dates for the, uh, for the, uh, required education training. Uh, we'll draft the RFP to hire the consultant. So the consultant will know actually that they have a commitment from the City of Moline. I don't think we should put out a RFP without having a program. Uh, so the RFP will be based on our program that we want the consultant to come in and help us with. Uh, but again, the main focus of the consultant will be that education, that technical aspect of it. While staff works on the other duties along with the selection committee, uh, there's a lot of experience that will be on that selection committee to address a lot of these concerns.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Waldron, then, Mr. O'Brien?
I just wanted to, uh, say excellent program.
Thank you.
Think it's gonna do real well, and then I would say I cannot support it. As those of you might remember, I am believing in restrictive ARP funds to be used for water and sewer. I believe that should have been our goal. If this doesn't accomplish that goal, the mayor knows I'm being consistent, so I cannot support this. Just so when you hear the no vote, you understand.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. O'Brien.
I think it's an excellent program. I do plan to support it, uh, and I trust staff. Uh, I don't think these guys would have brought it forward. I wanna see these empty storefronts with businesses in them. I, you know, we've got, yeah, as you saw in the presentation, we got a lot of empty storefronts, and I don't think putting it off is gonna help us in any means, uh, fill those storefronts. I think that there's a lot of hoops with this thing that they do have to jump through to get the money. And yeah, there's a lot of money here that they can get, but it's gonna take a lot of money for the, you know, if you've seen these empty storefronts, they they're gonna need some some TLC, and it's not gonna be cheap to, uh, to get them up to speed. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can tell you, since my presentation last Tuesday, I've talked to, um, Mexican restaurant that's opening in the downtown. They're very interesting. I talked to someone who wants to go into the Family Video Store. And then I talked to someone who wants to buy the Donut Delight up on Sixteenth Street. Everyone's heard about this program. There's a lot of buzz out there. I mean, I already have the media calling me for interviews.
That's good.
But I don't wanna put the cart before the horse.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
No, I I appreciate it, and I appreciate the changes you made for this to be a continuous, ongoing. I think that the, like we had talked about last time, just having the the two was was a mistake. I think I think this is much better than than where it was last week. I I think I would like to see, again, we had talked about having, and you you did add the officer, uh, the loan officer, the accountant. But I think, quite honestly, there probably also should be an attorney on, um, the list, so I'll I'll make a, uh, uh, motion to add, um, an attorney to the, uh, to the list here. Of people on the, uh.
Is there a second?
On the review committee.
To this amendment?
Cuz there's going to be a lot of legal issues with these different places starting up, and there should be somebody who knows at least some help with that, so that we don't get ourselves in some hot water. There's a lot of money that's going around on these things.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second you.
All right, seconded by Alderman Moyer. Um, Mr. Went.
And I'll just add to that. I mean, wh- when we're talking about over a million dollars that we're spending and just handing out on this, I agree. I've supported this. This has been something I've been sending emails for, since we budgeted it last year, where is it, where is it, where is it? So I I'm I'm all for it, but we need to make sure that this is, our i's are dotted, our t's are crossed, and if we're, that we're, we're doing this right, and I think that, uh, we've always had somebody on the revolving loan committee that was, uh, an attorney on it. Uh, I think that it would be important to have that here as well.
Can I ask how many people that would make a committee? Cuz we are, we know that certain sizes become dysfunctional.
Uh, and please know, anytime that we deal with any type of agreements
Be small in council.
Programs, we're in direct contact with our legal staff already. Um, let's see, that's gonna make.
We need to do smaller in council. One, two, three, four, five, six. There'd be seven.
Seven, okay.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments but that? Questions, Mr. Moyer?
Thank you. I'm I'm just trying to understand the, so the attorney would be representing, uh, with this amendment, representing us or?
No, they they would be in there when they're reviewing applications and those sorts of things, would bring up possible legal issues that would, that could happen up for the, for the businesses starting up.
For the benefit of the business.
Yeah. It's kinda like having an accountant on there when they're reviewing the pro formas and the business plans and and those sorts of things that are all the i's dotted, t's crossed, registrations with the state, all that kinda stuff. Because quite honestly, I don't think our legal staff has time to get into that minutia.
Mr. Macias.
Thank you, but we have done, uh, loan funds like this, right, for?
Absolutely. We do them every day, revolving loan, the childcare ones, um, uh, the small business loans, um, rehab programs. We do contracts every day, and if we ever have any questions or doubts or need to double-check ourself, we'll be the first ones to reach out to legal.
Thank you. Yes.
I had a follow-up.
You had a follow-up, Mr. Macias?
Uh, yeah, and I I guess in my opinion too, having a, uh, a loan officer with that experience, there if they have the experience of operating compliance and making sure that, you know, the likelihood of this getting paid back, all all those things does help uh, a lot with those aspects. They'll look at the business plan and all that stuff, uh. So we have the experience, the undies, we have the loan officers, I I I don't, I guess I I would hate to put another, uh, obstacle. I I'm not opposed to it, but, uh, I don't want to, uh, slow this down. Uh, I I really would love to see this going as soon as possible.
Mr. Went.
I I don't think it'll slow it down, but I think most of the programs you've talked about were like federal fo- uh, programs or, um, mature programs that had been out there for a long time that have reams and reams and reams of, uh, um, uh, bureaucracy behind it and regulations and how they work and in in those sorts of things. We did have a number of those grant programs that where we were just getting stuff out the door, and I think we were just doing that as in an emergency to keep doors open on on things. I think that this is a little bit different. This is, uh, if we've got this many people who are looking at it, and we're talking about eighty thousand dollars and and those sorts of things, I just wanna make sure that the things that are starting up, the revolving loan fund, when I was on it, I was the attorney that reviewed those things and asked the questions. And while a loan officer is good for compliance and those things, there were certainly a number of times where I brought up things within their, um, their plan, what they had to do with with certain registrations with the state, um, uh, um, other ordinances and 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 state law that they may not be aware of. It was good to have someone on the committee reviewing these things that asked those questions, because the ounce of prevention is worth the pound of cure. That something happens, we wind up, uh, giving the money to them, and then they find out later that they're in violation of X, Y, and Z. It 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 helps, and it it helped with the revolving loan fund on a number of times, having an attorney on it.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
So were you talking, I I guess I'm trying to figure out what this attorney, is this gonna be like billable hours?
No.
No?
Not at all. I volunteer my time all the time.
Okay. And you know somebody that's gonna do that, too?
There was an attorney on the revolving loan fund before I got on it, and I think there's been people on it since, but.
Mr. Moyer.
But I was just thinking about this. I'm trying to wrap my head around all the stages that someone's gonna go through. With a regular revolving loan fund, we're not gonna have an actual consultant to work, so each of these people applying are gonna go through the consultant process before they turn their application into the to this committee.
Yes, either you're gonna go through the advanced, uh, the beginning stages, the beginner's class. If you're already in business, you're gonna go through the advanced accelerate. Um, if you've never had a business, lack any business experience, you're gonna have to do both classes.
Sure.
Uh, then you would complete your application, uh, you would complete your business plan. And all that will be discussed in the education component of it, the technical aspect of it. Then you would submit that. Not every application is gonna be awarded for various reasons. Uh, but then, uh, if you are awarded, then you're gonna be following up with staff and the mentors in the program for the next two years.
So I guess I can see the point of having an attorney review, but I would also say it's probably not in every case, it's probably in specialized cases and I mean, I think the consultant might be qualified to determine whether this should probably get some extra review before it comes to the approval portion, right?
Thank you.
That makes sense to me.
Um, so I I'm kind of unclear. Are you saying that it, this sounds like it's, uh, duplicative in a sense?
To me, it sounds like it probably covers it pretty well without.
Okay, I I'll I'll just point out that this was not a suggestion when we, um, were discussing another adopted program that's ARPA-dollar centered, which is the childcare, that that, as you mentioned, they use our current legal staff for any of those questions. Anybody else? You have something?
I I guess, uh, the the consultant, are there attorneys with the consultant that we hired? Do they have attorneys? I would guess they do.
You know, I'm not sure who that consultant might be there and bring back to you guys. Um, again, we go to legal for our questions.
Okay.
We're fortunate to have them in-house, um, and we go to them, we utilize that. That's a a great asset that we have, a staff here to move forward. Um, and I, you know, putting a attorney on this, on the committee, are you sure you're not talking about billable hours? I mean, it it's a commitment every month, to sit down and read and.
We we have, we have people who are attorneys on planning commission. We have attorneys, I I did it on the revolving loan fund. There was people before. No, I I I mean, people volunteer their times all the time for the city. There's engineers that do it, there's there all those people in all those committees, they're professionals. Just because they're attorney doesn't mean that they're need to charge you billable hours. But an attorney does have a, uh, skill set that, um, many times becomes, um, very useful in in times like this. Like I said, when I was sitting on the revolving loan fund, um, we had an accountant, we had a a loan officer, and they had myself, and we all came at it from a different angle, and when starting up a business or expanding a business or those sorts, that is, um, was very important, and we we got away from a number of potholes be- because of that. I mean, and to your point about the, uh, childcare thing, that was one type of thing. The licensing is is what what it was, as long as in-house staff knew how that worked, you, it, there wasn't all these different moving parts, and it was also a quarter of the money in one year. We wound up doing it all upfront, but, um, it is a much smaller and a much more focused thing than what we're talking about. I mean, you're talking about all sorts of different businesses and all sorts of different regulations and 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 different things that would be happening. That's what I'm saying, is that the breadth is 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 much wider.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, um, we'll take a vote on this amendment to add an attorney to to the review committee. Roll call, please. Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Nay.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Nay.
Moyer.
Nay.
O'Brien.
Nay.
Waldron.
Nay.
Schmidt.
Nay.
Two ayes, six nays, and that motion fails. Okay, I'm back. So we're back to the original motion to adopt the program. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Nay.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay, and that motion passes.
First reading. Sorry.
First reading ordinances, thirty fifty-five dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter seven, animals and follow of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section seven dash eleven oh nine A, deer hunting. By repealing said sections in their entirety and acting in lieu thereof, one new section seven dash eleven oh nine A, dealing with the same subject matter. Council thirty fifty-six dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter fourteen, food and food handlers of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section fourteen dash twenty-two oh three, license and fees and payment. By repealing section fourteen dash twenty-two oh three in its entirety, acting in lieu thereof, one new section fourteen dash twenty-two oh three, dealing with the same subject matter by adding amendments to reflect the new fee structure as a result of the twenty twenty-two pre- fee review effective January first, twenty twenty-three. Council thirty fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter four, alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances, increasing the number of Class C licenses in the city at the request of SNS Twins Oil Incorporated, doing business as QC Mart. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I do not have anything for miscellaneous today. Mr. Williams. Macias?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Went?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, one, and hopefully, we're not talking out of turn here, but regarding the John Deere, uh, Road, um, I I got the feeling from from staff that you were, you weren't here when we had that discussion and and had that vote, so I thought, uh, maybe rather than me just give you what I think, I'll say, summarize what we had talked about and voted on, and then the other council people can jump in if I'm off base, and then you can be assured that that was the direction of of council, so. Um, so last year, December fourteenth, we, uh, we made a vote, and and it came in, um, uh, after, you know, the uh, the Christmas shopping season, when we were, I think, kids, uh, Christmas Eve, the the reason the parking lots were at the mall, at Lowe's, all all those different places were as big as what they were, was because on Christmas Eve, they were full of cars. Nowadays, there is never a day, any time during the year, where those park parking lots are full. And so the the discussion, uh, surrounded around that, and we thought that maybe a good area to focus on would be South Park Mall, then along the John Deere corridor, because there are excessive amounts of parking, um, in the majority of those big box, uh, stores. Um, and we have regularly people coming and saying they want to do development down on John Deere Road in in different spots, and if we could then do infill on the other side of whatever it is, Forty Second in front of Lowe's and, uh, Walmart and and down at the mall and and those sorts of things, I, we had run into the issue with, uh, um, this year with Harbor Freight, uh, where they couldn't do landscaping because they had to meet a, uh, parking requirement that they'll never need, and uh, was is excessive, and so the, um, the direction we had given staff at that time was uh, to review our parking ordinance, um, and, uh, come back to council with ways that we can reduce the, uh, the, um, uh, the excessive nature of tho- those parking requirements. Um, and again, if there were other places within the city that that staff thought was was appropriate, we had just said John Deere Road, cuz that was probably the vast majority of the big boxes and the super excessive, uh, uh, parking lot, uh, areas we had had, and we had asked them to come back within two months. And or a year later, and I understand you just got here six months ago, but, um, this is something where it is an ongoing thing. It's not like we need more and more parking, and so, um, uh, that was, that wa- that was the direction. Is that kinda the consensus? Anybody else remember something differently?
I I don't remember anything differently, um, excepting that as following that, it it went to looking at a formal study, to which our, we responded after that, we didn't need to do that. It was a pretty clear, just looking at how we could reduce it back.
Yeah.
That was, the initial report back was on that study piece, and that.
Yeah, they wanted to outsource, I mean, i- i- it doesn't need to be something crazy. We just, no, it needs to be reduced. And common sense can be used.
And and staff would agree. Uh, we've looked at the parking standards. I do believe our parking standards are up to date. They are, they require a lot of parking. Uh, our, for example, our, uh, vehicle intensive sales requires one for every fifty parking spaces, so when we look at like a two thousand square foot like Starbucks, we require forty spaces. That's, that's insane, in my opinion, my professional opinion. And so, yes, there's lots of resources out there. We can take a look at it. Um, I will, I will make a. I will, I will make a commitment that we will get something back to this body first quarter of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Anything further?
Yeah, two other things. Middle of November, I had made a request. We have an advisory opinion as part of our ordinance where any elected official can ask legal for an advisory opinion on something. And I was told right bef- right before that the the meeting here that the advisory opinion I had asked of our council was regarding the disallowing or the indication that it was inappropriate that we direct staff to come back with anything at any time during meetings. The John Deere Road is a perfect example of how we had used that in the past. That was not on the agenda. We had discussed it. We then directed staff, and they were supposed to come back with something. So I had asked in in mid-November of the city attorney to come back with an advisory opinion stating where it is inappropriate and some some guidance on that. I was told right before the meeting that she was directed by the city administrator not to provide that. And so I've got some concerns about that, and I just wanted that to be public. And I'd love to hear.
Yes, Mr. Christopoulos?
So I believe that I did not say that the city administrator directed me not to do it. I said that he said not to do it now and to wait until next month.
I I believe I would add, did we or did we not in our budget work sessions talk about legal the legal fees and the fact that requests to have work done by legal staff needed to go through the city administrator? Like, did you, is anyone recalling that? Yes, Mr. Went?
I I couldn't agree with you more. I did do it through the, but an advisory opinion.
No, I read the email.
Is part of our ordinance that is a right of any elected official to ask for it. And so if what your good governance is, is through the budgetary process to say, oh, well, what we have in our ordinance, an elected official can't ask for because at any point, the the city administration would be like, oh, we just don't want to pay for it, I think goes counter to what our ordinance in chapter two says.
Yes, and I'm not stating an opinion. I'm asking for a recollection of what was stated regarding what what is being asked of and what we're spending. We can continue to to address your concern, but to also to add clarity, the what was shared in one or two meetings regarding direction to staff was not about never giving them direction ever. It was about which parts of the meeting it is, we are in compliance or not for doing that.
And and that's exactly what I asked for the opinion. And that please provide anywhere within state statute or PAC regulations or anything in which a council voting to direct staff, not a final decision on anything, but purely to ask staff to bring something back for us then to review, which would be on the agenda, would be inappropriate.
Mr. Christopoulos?
And I believe that more accurately, my opinion at the time was that not that it was prohibited by law, but that we were coming at times close to that line and that best practice dictated that we stopped doing that. So I never said that it was unlawful. I merely spoke to a best practice.
Thank you for the clarification. Is there anything further in your miscellaneous?
Yeah, I I had one more. I had requested two weeks ago, when we were told that we had a draft opinion that was provided prior to Thanksgiving with the MetroNet. Because we're now, I think, six months since when we voted to say that we wanted to move forward and start negotiating with them, that we still haven't been provided with a a copy of it. So I sent a a message to the city administrator and to the the city attorney asking, hey, can I get a copy of that? And I haven't been provided it. And again, was told that it's not appropriate to provide a copy to an elected official because it's not ready. And I think as elected officials, if there is something that is being considered within the city, if we would like to review a copy of it, that is not inappropriate at all. And whether it's ready or finalized or or anything, that should be a a request that is granted.
Mr. Christopoulos?
So to clarify that as well, I said that I, you know, that the draft document is still undergoing change and that it's not ready to be distributed.
And would you, when you say undergoing change, that it has to do with the actual negotiating process?
Yes.
And Mr. Dykehizen, is it common for any elected officials to be involved in the negotiating process?
You know, my experience is that it it just it varies from city council to city council in consultation with their legal counsel and what they're comfortable with. I mean, I I think it's just important that the council, city council lands at that spot in consultation with their attorneys.
Yes, Mr. Christopoulos?
So it's a very dynamic process right now. A great deal of back and forth and consultation with various members of staff. And it's undergoing change, you know, daily. So to distribute it at this point would very likely mean that the copy, the draft that you receive today will not be the draft of tomorrow. And so it is, you know, it's inappropriate in that sense because it's not giving you anything that really tells you where we are at currently. And and could in fact create some confusion given that we are working on this pretty consistently. So, you know, that's the practical side of it. I'm I'm not, you know, it's not a legal issue as much as we are just working on it. And what you might see today will not be the same as tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Well, two things. One, was not asking to be part of the negotiations in any way, shape, or form. And two, to to that point, I had said, I know that this isn't the final thing. And to, I guess, insinuate that you you couldn't possibly understand if you saw this, you must think that it's the final version, is just ridiculous. I mean, just to see exactly kind of where we're at. I mean, we're six, seven months since we made that that vote to say, hey, let's move forward with it. And we haven't even seen a draft, have any idea what we're talking about. I thought that it would, I wanted to see kind of where we were at. Not indicating that that's the final version or the the end version at all. But as an elected official of this community, it is absolutely appropriate to see kind of where we're at and 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 what's going on if we request it and we want to review it. And so, again, I asked if you can provide what the current version is, knowing that it may change tomorrow. I just am interested where we are seven months after the the vote was taken.
Anything further from the council on this topic? Hearing none, is that the end of your miscellaneous?
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've just wanted to thank the staff. I've now been to two ADU meetings led by the CED department. And great discussions were had all around, very thoughtful and and well-presented, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moyer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. O'Brien?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Waldron?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Any other staff with updates? Okay, hearing none. Is there any other public comment this evening? Hearing none, don't believe we have executive session, so I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Alderman, Timian, seconded by Macias, all in favor?
Fifteen seconds to spare.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're adjourned.